Good morning. Good morning. It's good to see that we have a nearly full house joining us for our August meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Community College System, and we thank you for attending. If we would please start by calling the meeting to order, which I am doing now, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chairman, we need to do the invocation.
I'm sorry. David, as usual, is absolutely correct, and reading is fundamental. And we'll have the invocation this morning by Jennifer Blair Foster, Minister of Family Discipleship and Administration at Heritage Baptist Church in Montgomery. She received her Master of Divinity and Master of Theology from New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary, where she is also an adjunct professor. She is currently a PhD candidate conducting her dissertation research on second-chair leadership theory and the local church. She is a member of the Baptist Association of Christian Educators and has been both a pastor and teacher for many years. Jennifer has been married to Reed Foster for almost 25 years. Jennifer Foster, thank you.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this August morning where we can gather together and conduct the business of education. Father, thank you for these leaders in our state who care deeply that young women and young men are equipped for the future. And God, as they celebrate 60 years of educational leadership in our state and as they focus on community, the word unity is an important part of that word. So may this meeting be characterized with unity as they celebrate the good things that have happened in our state's community colleges. And God, that they would face the challenges ahead of us with unity and singleness of purpose. God, I speak your blessings over this gathering today, and may your perfect will be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Next, we have item four on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. I'm just really having a great day here, right? Let's do the roll call. We'll go with what's printed. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Jeb Shale. Mr. John Mitchell. Ms. Valerie Gray. Mr. Goodrich Rogers. Mr. Ron Houston. Mr. Levellin Rowe. Mr. John McCartney. Mr. Britton Lightsey. Dr. Yvette Richardson. Governor Kay Ivey. You have a call.
All right. So we'll try item four again. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Second? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor approving signify by raising your hand or voice vote. The motion passes for approval of the agenda. Next, we have item five, approval of the minutes of the July 12, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? These minutes were actually distributed in advance for board members' review. Please, may I have a motion for approval? It's been moved. Do I have a second? Moved and properly second. All those in favor, please show by raise of hand or voice vote. It's been moved and properly second. The motion passes. Approval of the minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any folks signed up for public comment? Seeing none, we will continue to move through with item seven, Sneed State Community College Student Spotlight.
Good morning, Chairman Rohn, Chancellor Baker, members of the board. I'm Joe Whitmore, the president of Sneed State, and it's my honor to bring to you one of our students today to be highlighted as in our student spotlight. His name is Edwin Jarkwin Perez, and he has a story that is truly inspirational, and it's going to be one that I think you will remember for a long time. When Ebony called me a couple of weeks ago and said that Sneed was selected, it was our turn to present a student, we met with our staff, and the decision on which student we were going to bring with us did not take very long at all because the story of Edwin's overcoming the adversity and some of the things that he's done in his life is truly inspirational. He is a recent graduate of Sneed State in May, and he received the prestigious Jack Kent Cook Foundation Scholarship, which is a nationwide scholarship that is only given to 60 students annually. Out of thousands of applications, only 60 students received this scholarship, and Edwin is the first Sneed State student to receive it, and he is the only student in the state of Alabama to have received that scholarship this year. He just returned from a trip to Washington, D.C. with his fellow scholarship recipients for an orientation session, and he's with us today to tell his story. He's originally from Mexico, raised by his grandparents, and he told me the story that early in his life, his mom left his children with the grandparents to come to America because she wanted to establish herself and have a better life for her family. So he was raised by his grandparents, and he told me the story of being awoken in the middle of the night when he was kindergarten age, put in the back of a pickup truck, driven through immigration to reunite with his mom, who he had been separated from for a while, so he had to be reacquainted with her, and he was dropped into a kindergarten class where he spoke no English. And none of us really can know how frightening that must be as a child to be in a group of peers and not be able to communicate. But in spite of that, he's been successful. As I said, he graduated from Sneed, and he actually has stuck with us during this summer, staying involved with student activities and being involved with helping other students get registered for class as part of our Parson Days orientation. So the road from not being able to speak English in kindergarten to actually helping students get ready for college is what we're here to celebrate. We've prepared a short video to introduce Edwin to you, and we'd like to show that to you now. The one word I would use to describe Edwin would be inspirational. When one takes a moment to look at the obstacles that he has overcome, the things that he's done in his life to achieve his goals, and the success that he's had in his pursuits, it truly is a lesson to all of us of being able to stick to something that you believe in and follow through and be able to be successful at it.
Edwin has been an amazing Sneed State parson. He has participated all around our campus in so many activities and in so many functions, serving in SGA, serving as a classroom leader, serving as a campus leader. And when he was in my classes, I never knew there were any struggles in his life because he persisted, he continued, and he was excellent in everything that he did.
When I met Edwin, he was shy and really lacked confidence. And after two years at Sneed State, he has put himself into uncomfortable situations, and he is amazing. He is an overcomer, and he is Sneed State. He is Jack Kent Cook. He is all the things that that scholarship program was looking for.
Growing up, my parents instilled the value of education and all the opportunities that come along with it, and I felt like education could be something that elevates me and can eventually lead me to helping people. My name is Edwin Romeo Jarkwin Perez. I recently graduated from Sneed State Community College with an associate's degree in mechanical engineering. So what led me to attend Sneed State was the fact that I felt like I wasn't prepared to make that leap from high school to a four-year, and I feel like I was ready to leave home as I am a first-generation college student, and I felt like Sneed was the proper choice. This spring, I was one of 60 people nationwide who was awarded the Jack Kent Cook Transfer Scholarship. This scholarship means a lot to me and my family just because it lifts such a heavy financial burden off of us where they don't have to struggle and they don't have to worry about paying for my education, and they can focus on taking care of my siblings. The Jack Kent Cook Foundation asked about what I overcame in my story. So like many first-generation college students, my story begins far from home. I was raised in Mexico by my grandparents. It was a very humble lifestyle. We didn't have a lot of luxuries, but we had water, but it came from a well. So I just remember growing up, and one time I mentioned it to my aunt and my uncles why their teeth were stained. But it was, me not knowing as a kid, it was because they had drinking so much water from the well through their whole lifetime that it would stain their teeth because they had so many minerals, and it wasn't filtered properly. And then I also realized that we didn't have the best access to electricity. We had some access, but we didn't have the best. And then we lived in a one-bedroom house, and then one bedroom and it had a kitchen, but we're truly grateful for that. We didn't have the best life, but I would say we had an amazing life growing up. My parents, they lived a very hard life. Maybe it wasn't the happiest, but sometimes they didn't get to have a childhood because they had to work so early in their life. And I felt like my mother wanted to give us a childhood, so she just allowed us to have a childhood which she didn't have, and she just instilled the values of education and family and faith in us. And I feel like that's what drives myself and my siblings as well, just to show her that we're proud of her and that we acknowledge her sacrifices and that it was worth it. When I was old enough to attend kindergarten, I was brought to the U.S. and I attended kindergarten in Albertville, where it was a very drastic change from my quiet life in Mexico. I struggled to be confident, not knowing the language. I struggled to communicate with my peers, and that ultimately led for me to be a very shy kid. And then I ended up finishing my high school education at Gunnersville, where I struggled to find confidence and struggled to find who I truly was. At first, we would cry a lot. Some of us would do it in public, like myself, but some of us would go and hide somewhere and just quietly cry because we miss our old life. We didn't understand why we were moved here, why we were just uprooted from our old life and just brought to a place where we didn't know the language, where we didn't understand why we had to come to school, why we had to struggle through this. So I wouldn't say it was easy. It made us introverted at first, and then when we got into high school, we kind of started to find ourselves. We weren't as confident. I wasn't as confident. And then coming to Sneed, it just helped me gain confidence and step into leadership roles. There was a moment here at Sneed that sparked for me to become a leader or wanting to be a leader, and it was at Trio because it was where I connected with a bunch of people that had similar backgrounds or similar upraisings and just sharing our story with each other. It just, it made me realize that I wasn't the only one going through it and that there was other people out there that had the same struggles and that it is possible and that you just got to keep fighting for your dreams.
Edwin has proven himself to be a real leader in our student body, and other students naturally gravitate toward him and his personality, the way he carries himself with the confidence that he's developed during the time he's been here. Edwin actually delivered the invocation for our commencement exercises bilingual, both English and Spanish, at our last commencement in May, did a fantastic job with that, and just goes to be another example of the way that he has invested himself in our college and in our community and in the student body.
I am very proud of Edwin. He was an excellent student and always very respectful and had very good rapport with his other classmates and performed well throughout the campus. So I'm very proud of him and his accomplishments.
Other students can learn from Edwin in the way that it is okay to be vulnerable. It is okay to not always be dealt the best situation, that you can have grit and just keep moving forward, and seeing what all he's accomplished to date is truly inspiring.
I chose mechanical engineering because back home, many people don't have the same opportunity or same resources to have clean drinking water or just a reliable source of energy. So growing up, an engineer visited our village, which he helped set up an electric grid that allowed for more accessibility for electricity. Growing up, that's something I always thought about, and I'm eternally grateful for that engineer. And I feel like my degree in mechanical engineering in some way could help other people bring resources that they aren't as accessible to them. I feel like helping others is an essential part of life. It's not just about yourself. It's about bringing everybody up with you, and I feel like that engineer just helped so many people. If he did or didn't realize it, he helped me, which I can eventually help other people and inspire other people with similar stories.
You have to take my word for it. That was an amazing video if it didn't come through. But I think what Edwin has done for everyone in this room is remind us why we get up and come to work to do what we do every day. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Chairman, Chancellor, members of the board, Edwin Jarkwin Perez.
Good morning. My name is Edwin Jarkwin Perez, and I'd like to thank Sneed State Community College and ACCS for allowing me the opportunity to tell my story and to thank each and every person in this room. Without Sneed State and the Alabama Community College System, my story could have turned out very differently. I'm very grateful and look forward to continuing my journey in higher education in the University of Alabama in Huntsville. Thank you again.
Dr. Whitmore, you started out by saying it didn't take you long to determine which of your students to bring along with you this morning, and I think we can all agree it was a very quick and good decision. Edwin, there's so much we can all say about your story. One thing that you just said in concluding is that your story has completed or something like that. I would agree with you to a point, but you're still very much pen and hand writing your story. And young man, you're writing a very good story. The presidents that are here guide institutions that each have a mission statement. Those mission statements, while the words may vary a little bit, all center around the notion of making education a linchpin for success. We applaud you for taking this opportunity to use education as your ladder, and we welcome you and thank you for sharing your story with us this morning. So thank you very much, and Godspeed to you on the rest of your journey. Thank you.
Thank you again.
These college spotlights.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
I think I spotted the head cheerleader for your college.
Yes, sir, you did.
Why don't you introduce that cheerleader? Why don't you introduce that cheerleader?
First Lady of SNEED State, my wife, Janet Whitmore. I didn't invite her to come. When she found out we were spotlighting one of our students, she says, "I'm going with you." So... But, uh, she's well-invested, she is a great head cheerleader, and, um, and I'm very proud and honored of the, the way she participates with our kids and gets involved with them and, and does the things that she does around campus. Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you. These college spotlights, as you can see, are one of the highlights of our meetings, where we really get a chance to see and hear in the first-person voice in most cases from students who are actually living what we all are working to achieve, and that is opportunities every day. So, thank you again. As we continue through our, uh, agenda on Item 8, which is Executive Legal and Public Information, we'll start with Item 8A1, uh, from Wallace State Community College in Huntsville. And it reads thusly. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System of Trustees authorize the President of Wallace State Community College Huntsville to name the welding classroom suite in the Technical Education Center for Welding and Entrepreneurship as the Donald R. Clay Welding Classrooms in memory of Donald R. Clay, and to add appropriate signage." Do I have a motion for approval? I have a motion on the floor, seconded.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lightsey. All those in favor, please, uh, raise your hand or voice vote. This item has been approved. Next, we have an item from Wallace State Community College Huntsville. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Wallace State Community College Huntsville to name the conference room in the Technical Education Center for Welding and Entrepreneurship as a Sandra Phillips' Self Conference Room in honor of Sandra Phillips' self, and to add appropriate signage." Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion on for.
Second.
Second by Jeb. All those in favor, please, uh, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have an item, the Northwest Shoals Community College Approval for the Naming of the Baseball Field. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the President of Northwest Shoals Community College to name the baseball field as Mark Lee Legacy Field, and to add appropriate signage." Do I have a motion for approval?
Don't mind.
Have a motion, um, second from Mr. Shell. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. Recommendation passes. Next, we have an item from Reed State Technical College Review and Approval of the Revised Mission Statement. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the Revised Mission Statement of Reed State Technical College." Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Mr. Lightsey, a second from, uh, all those in, uh, favor, please, uh, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have an item that is from the Board of Trustees, which is the revised mission, uh, devised meeting statement, um, which as noted, you will see the changes to some of the meetings that were, uh, previously noted. As those who have read this, you can see what the changes are, uh, do I have a motion for approval of the change in the statement, of, of the schedule? It's been moved. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Shell. All those in favor of it, please raise your hand or voice vote. The 2023 meeting schedule has been approved and revised. Thank you. Next, we have an item from Trenum State Community College Additional Instructional Site. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Trenum State Community College." Do I have a motion for approval? Have a motion, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Houston. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. The motion actually passes. Next, we have an item from Calhoun Community College Establishment of Dorm Rental Fees. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Calhoun Community College to establish rental fees for the newly constructed dorms in Decatur, Alabama. The fee will take effect spring semester 2024." Do I have a motion?
Don't mind.
Motion from Mr. Rogers, second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Gray. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion actually passes. Next, we have an item from Trenum State Community College Approval of Special Building Fee Increase. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Trenum State Community College to increase the special building fee from $7 to $15 per credit hour. The fee will take effect fall semester 2023." Do I have a motion? Have a motion from Mr. Mitchell, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rogers. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice. The motion passes. Next, we have an item from Jefferson State, uh, Community College Workforce Education Center. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Jefferson State College, Community College to proceed with construction of the project named Workforce Education Center. The project will construct a new slab-on-grade, single-story workforce education center for Jefferson State Community College. This facility will be approximately 10,500 square feet and will provide training classroom space, skilled trades labs, a storm shelter, and offices. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than October 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Mr. Houston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lightsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have an item from Shelton State Community College Martin Campus Theater Renovation. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the Martin Campus Theater renovation. The project's scope includes replacement of the stage flooring, structural and mechanical improvements to the orchestra pit, new paint, new theater flooring, and the replacement of theater seating. Construction contracts for the renovation shall be executed no later than October 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Mr. Houston.
Second.
Second from Mr. Shell. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have an item from Shelton State Community College Martin Campus Renovation of ELT/ILT for Community Education. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the project Martin Campus Renovation of ELT Lab for Community Education. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than November 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion from Mr. Lightsey, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Goodrich. All those in favor, please raise your hand or by voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have an item from Northwest Shoals Community College Phil Campbell Campus Renovation. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Northwest Shoals Community College to proceed with the purchase of long-lead-time mechanical equipment that is part of the construction for the project named Phil Campbell Campus Renovation. This project includes demolition of buildings 302, 303, and 304, renovation of buildings 301, 305, 306, 307, and gym level 308, with the addition of a new building named The Patriot Plaza. The renovated space is approximately 56,489 square feet and another 5,800 square feet of new construction that will modernize and provide academic and administrative space to accommodate program needs. Construction contracts for the mechanical equipment shall be executed no later than November 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion for approval? Motion from Mr. Shell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Houston. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes. Next, we have an item from Lurleen B. Wallace Community College MacArthur Campus Roof Restorations. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Lurleen B. Wallace Community College to proceed with construction of the project named MacArthur Campus Roof Restorations. This project will repair structural damage, building fascia, and restore modified Batuman roofing systems on buildings BCHINJ located at the MacArthur Campus. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than October 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion for approval? Motion from Mr. Mitchell.
Second.
Second from Mr. Lightsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Next, we have Wallace State Community College Arley Winston County Community Learning Center. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Wallace State Community College to accept the bid packages for site work, plumbing, and electrical for the Arley Winston County Community Learning Center project. The building project will provide space for adult education, workforce development training, and technology access solutions for the community of Arley and Winston County. Contracts for the modular building shall be executed no later than November 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion, uh, for approval? Have a motion for approval?
Second.
From Mr. McCartney, second by Mr. Rogers. All those in favor, please raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes. Our next item is from Bevel State Community College Clem Gymnasium Renovation. "It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to proceed with the construction project named Clem Gymnasium Renovation. The project's scope includes modernization, exterior finishes, um, updated interior finishes, new seating, new equipment and fitness room, improvements to locker rooms, and update to all building systems. Construction contracts for this project shall be executed November, no later than November 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire." Do I have a motion for?
So move.
Motion from Mr. Lightsey, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rogers. Excuse me. Will you signify your approval by raising your hand or voice vote? The motion passes. I'm gonna take a swig of water here. And we're now at Item 10 Personnel. Ms. Feinstein.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with the Human Resources Department, and I have three talented new additions to our staff that I would love to introduce to you. First of all, we have Destiny Smith. Destiny, would you stand? Destiny is our new workforce coordinator for the Innovation Center. She has almost 20 years of experience in human resources, sales, accounting, and management roles. She's held the positions of retention supervisor, service specialist, accountant, and office manager in the business world. She earned her associate's degree from Lurleen B. Wallace Community College. She also has a bachelor's degree in HR management and a master's in management and leadership from Western Governors University in Salt Lake City. Destiny is based at Lurleen B. Wallace Community College. Thank you, Destiny. Jessica Franks, would you stand? Jessica is our new office manager for the Innovation Center. She has over 23 years of administrative experience in higher education and in the business world. She most recently served as administrative assistant to the Vice President of North America Fire Equipment Company, and as a loan assistant at Citizens Bank in Decatur. She has provided administrative support at Calhoun Community College and the Marshall Space Flight Center. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration from Gardner Webb University in North Carolina, and she is based at the Innovation Center in Decatur. Thank you. And Carrie McCandless, Carrie, would you stand? Carrie is our new community outreach navigator for the Adult Ed Department. She has over 23 years of management experience in the business world, both in production, purchasing, and inventory. She served for the last eight years at Northwest Shoals Community College in Workforce Solutions and as a career development coach. She has a bachelor's degree in human environmental science from the University of North Alabama and a master's in business administration from Faulkner University. And Carrie will be based, or is based, at Northwest Shoals Community College. So, please help me welcome these talented new people to the staff.
Thank you, and welcome to our newest team members. Thank you very much, and welcome, glad to have you on board. Chancellor's report.
Neil Scott. Shell's gonna give us an update on enrollment.
Yes, sir. Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We do have some, I, I feel like every time I stand up here, I'm in the middle of a semester, and I'm able, and I have to say that we're still counting numbers, there's still another registration period that's ahead of us, and so the numbers aren't final. But, one thing I did want to do today is review with you our 2022-2023 school year and the, uh, and, and the enrollment metrics from that term that were really encouraging, uh, and in some ways really staggering. I'm gonna share that with you in just a minute. I'll, I'll go through this very quickly. Fall '22, 18 of our 24 colleges were ahead in their, uh, in their head count, uh, and we had over 78,000 students who registered for fall courses. Uh, again, that's the second, that was the second fall in a row that we had seen an increase, and, uh, we're glad to see those numbers still moving in the, in the right direction. Spring '23, the trend continued. 22 of our, of our 24 colleges were ahead, we had over 72,000. That was a 5% gain over spring, over spring '22. Credit hour production was up 3.89% over spring '22, and, uh, so that was, uh, again, a very exciting term. And then summer, the last time I spoke to you, I don't think our summer numbers were quite finalized, uh, and, which is why that, uh, that dangling asterisk is still there. I failed to remove it off of my PowerPoint, but, uh, but we had over 46,000 students who took courses with our colleges this summer. And again, all the numbers that I'm presenting to you today are just for credit numbers. They're not non-credit, they're not Skills for Success, they're not Adult Education, these are only for credit numbers. But, our credit hour production was up over 10%, which is great. 20 of our 23 colleges who offer summer courses increased head count. The unduplicated head count for the '22-23 school year, this is the entire year, was over 115,000, almost 116,000 students. That's 8,800 students more than the number of students we educated in '21-22. That's an 8.2% increase. For the entire year, 22 of our 22, of our 24 colleges saw an increase in that unduplicated head count. Our credit hour production for that same period was over, was almost 97,000 more credit hours than in '21 and '22. That's a 7.13% increase. 20 of our 24 colleges saw an increase in credit hour production across the entire academic year. This is the staggering piece that I want to share with you. Our 2022-2023 head count is the highest that we have seen, and I feel like I need to ask for a drum roll here, but I don't know if that's appropriate, uh, but, uh, but 22-23 head count is the highest that we have seen since 2016-2017. And the staggering piece about that is that is pre-pandemic numbers. We are, we are in a very good position with our head count right now, uh, and, and we're expecting an, an increase again this fall. I'll show you some numbers related to that in just a moment, but I just want to, I want to take this moment to recognize our presidents, recognize our, our student services staff, the recruiters, the enrollment managers, the deans of students, and, and instruction plays just an- just an absolutely critical role in this. If we don't offer relevant programs to our students and teach those in a really good, positive way, then these students do not come. So I think it's appropriate that we give them a round of applause. All right, I'll move on to this fall. Applications are still looking great for fall twenty twenty-three. As of yesterday, our colleges have received over eighty-eight thousand applications for admission. That's over ten thousand more applications than we had received year-to-date, a thirteen point two seven percent increase. The increases, I'm not going to belabor these points, but those are, that does include increases in first-time freshman applications to the tune of fourteen point two five percent. Dual enrollment applications, twenty-one point six two percent. Transfer applications, over nine percent. And we have an increase in returning, readmit applications, and you may not be totally familiar with what that number is. Those are students who have stopped out. They didn't complete their degree or certificate with us. They left, and it took them a significant period of time to decide that they wanted to return. Enough time had passed that they had to reapply to the college. So this is a very encouraging number as well, to see that many people who are wanting to return. Our registrations for fall twenty-three are up. As of August seventh, sorry, my formatting got cut off there, so I'm going to consult my notes. Our registrations for fall twenty-three are up as well. As of August, as of August seventh, we had over sixty-eight thousand students registered for fall classes. That's an increase of over eighty-three hundred over what we had on that same date last year. That's a thirteen point eight four percent increase. And students have registered for over six hundred and thirty-five thousand credit hours. That's over fifty-seven thousand more year-to-date. So that's a nine point nine three percent increase. Again, a lot can happen between now and the time that we're able to finally count those students, but, and our colleges are running drop, but I'm always, I'm always optimistic whenever we're ahead before it comes time to drop those students for non-payment or non-attendance. But we're in a very good position. I'm very excited to see where we are. And again, I just want to thank you for your support as a board, and I want to thank our colleges for the hard work that they've done to make these exceptional enrollment numbers happen at a time where, again, many colleges are beginning to rebound from the pandemic, but it's a much slower rebound than what it is that we've been able to see. Are there any questions?
Neil, you made the comment at the beginning of the presentation about this is for credit.
Right.
How do we give the board an idea of what we're doing? Because that's a total part of what we're doing. Today's, the big issue out there today, the governor addressed this the other day in a presentation, but the issue of training people who go directly into the workforce may not be pursuing a degree of any kind, but simply a certification. And we need to find a way to be more precise. This is not a criticism, just, this is just, find a way to be more precise in talking about what is really happening. I know we introduced three new board, three new, a couple of those people were from the Innovation Center. I know we trained over five thousand people there in a short period of time, in less than a year's operation. So we've got to step up that accounting.
Completely agree. And I think that, I think that being able to, having a system through which these people are applying and registering for various programs and being able to track that registration and those applications across the entire year gives us a nice benchmark. If we can do that for a year, it gives us a great benchmark to be able to push those and find, and find year-to-year how we're performing. So I think that having these same types of numbers for both Innovation Center and workforce education is a critical component to what it is that we're trying to do and being able to tell our story.
Neil, I know I've heard nationwide, community college enrollment is down thirteen, fourteen percent, I'm not sure, but that's a, you know, that's a significant delta there. I appreciate what you and the college presidents, what they're doing, so that's terrific.
Thank you. Well, thank you again for your support, and thank you for always giving me an opportunity to provide an update.
Thank you, Neil. We appreciate it.
President of Reed State, come to the mic. In the short time that this young lady has been with us, she's been busy. Tell us a little bit about.
Well, Chancellor, I don't think I could do it without having a PowerPoint presentation. As educators know, we have to have a presentation to just drive home our point, so I'm going to ask if we can pull that up, but to our Board of Trustee members, the Chancellor, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you a little bit about what's been going on. And as you all see, you have approved a revision of our mission statement on today, and I'm very grateful and thankful for you doing that. And I'm going to share with you the reason, one of the reasons why we were asking for that. And as you saw earlier, the mission statement was approved just recently in June, but we've been busy working on SAC COC accreditation. For twenty years, I've been at the institution for twenty years, and you see there all the things that we have going on, but for twenty years I've been at Reed State, and for twenty years I can remember sometime back in two thousand and four, I want to say around that time, I remember Dr. Carl Wicks coming to the college and talking to us about pursuing SAC COC accreditation. So it has taken the institution almost twenty years to get there, but guess what? We have made it. We successfully submitted an application for accreditation in less than a year due to the support and help of Dr. Glenda Colgaros there and all of the great faculty and staff at Reed State. And in that, in that time, the institution has also worked on our reaffirmation with our current accrediting body as well as ACEN accreditation. So let me just give you a quick overview of what we're going through now. Again, as I mentioned, it's taken us almost twenty years to make application. We were able to make that happen in roughly a year. That means a lot of work went into our employees requesting information, making sure that we had the information needed to submit that application. Well, we received our feedback in June, and with that feedback, it was June or June, and with that feedback, they requested that we add, make a change to our mission statement. Now, while we've been working on SAC COC accreditation, as I mentioned, we've been working on ACEN accreditation, which is the accreditation for nursing programs. So we were doing that. We're all, and that visit is September sixth through eighth. We have our reaffirmation visit for the Council on Occupational Education in the second week in November, and we anticipate a visit at the end of the fall with a, hopefully, with the SAC COC candidacy review team. So our staff has worked in this last year on three different accreditations. I can't say enough about the work that they do and the support that we received from the system office in order to be able to do that. It took all of us working together. It took the great support of our Chancellor and his team to make that happen, so I'm so honored and grateful for that. We are also, we've also started athletics at our institution. We've done multiple apprenticeships, working with various industry entities. We've increased our enrollment, the slide that showed just a moment ago, shown our enrollment has increased every fall over fall and spring over spring and summer over summer for the last three years since we've gone through the pandemic. So with all of that work that's gone in, in such a small team, we are, we cannot say enough about the hard work and the support that we've had from our community. We're so honored, and we're so grateful for the work that they do and the support that you all bring to our institution. Now, I would like, if possible, Chancellor, if Sarah could come up and talk to you a little bit about the timeline so that the Board of Trustees can understand, again, the work that the system office is providing to help us make this happen by that deadline, and also following that, asking if Glenda Colgaros would also share a little bit more about the SAC COC timeline and the anticipated possibility of being accredited here within the next year or so.
That's fine. I want to make something clear. How long have you been at our college as president?
Right, two years.
And I remember the time that she asked me, can we pursue SAC accreditation? They've been chasing that for twenty years in one form or the other, but made very little progress. But it's not just SAC accreditation. Since Coretta has been there at that school as a president, the whole environment of the school has changed, and things are being accomplished, and I just want the public to know how much we appreciate the job that you're doing. Now, go ahead.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Well, I will just echo with the Chancellor, so we're so very proud of Reed and all of their accomplishments, and they're about to face another accomplishment that no other college has ever been able to have the opportunity or the desire, I think, to move forward with. But SAC COC has required that Reed's FY twenty-three financial statement audits be completed by November fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. That is an incredibly tight timeline, but we're going to make it happen. We have started our support schedule with the college already. Their finance team is completely on board. Our audit team with Car Riggs Ingram are completely on board, and we are moving forward fast and furious to get everything collected, the year closed, financial statements drafted, and the audit completed by November fifteenth so that SAC can have everything in line for their December fifteenth, I believe, meeting. So she is blazing trails and setting goals that we're going to make every effort to attain.
Well, good morning, everyone. Could we bring back Dr. Boykin's presentation and the timeline so we can walk through it with the SAC COC? I'm Glenda Colgaros, I'm Special Assistant to the Chancellor for Accreditation, and so as a part of my position, I have worked with Reed State Technical College to seek this initial accreditation with SAC COC. I've done a lot of things with SAC COC over the years. I've done reaffirmations, I've done all kinds of visits, but I've never sought initial accreditation until now. And so we want to walk you through a timeline of what we've done so far and talk to you a little bit about what we lack on that timeline. The first thing that we had to do on this timeline is someone from the college had to go through mandatory attendance at a pre-applicant workshop. Well, we asked that that be three of us instead of two. Well, we first asked if we could do it in that November timeline when we, of November of twenty-one, and they said they were full because it was only a week away, and so we begged, and then they said there's a limit of two people from the college to be able to do. So we approached Dr. Bell Whelan, who's president of SAC, and we asked for that rule to be waived. So three of us from Reed State Technical College, there's a timeline on there at some point. There you go. That's it. So step one, we had three of us go through that in November of twenty twenty-one where they talked to different entities about, can we go back to the timeline? There we go. That's the only slide I have. But anyway, we went through that, and then our submission of application with the first half of the standards, you have to complete this application for SAC COC accreditation, and along with that, you have to do narrative and documentation for half of the seventy-seven standards that's part of a compliance report to SAC COC. We turned that in in September of twenty twenty-two, and that's what we were told during the mandatory session would be our official first step. The step you see as number three really should have been number two, because the U.S. Department of Education has a requirement that if you wish to seek SAC COC accreditation, that you would do so by first asking their permission. We found that out in the December twenty twenty-two meeting of SAC COC during a session for initial accreditation, and they said from SAC COC that it might have been a rule from the U.S. DOE, but the vice president from SAC that had been working with institutions for twenty-something years said it had never been enforced, and she knew nothing of it. So they had scrambled to get the colleges that were up for candidacy in December, the approval. We, so we came home, we were the only ones that had already submitted, that were in the boat, that we didn't get candidacy in December. We'd already submitted our application in September. So in December, we asked for permission to submit that application to SAC COC. It took them six months to give us that approval. They are overwhelmed because some states have passed laws that all colleges in the state change accreditors every ten years. And I know other presidents in here probably shudder for even hearing that, that statement, but that's probably the reason for our slow response from the U.S. Department of Education. But we finally got that in May of this year. So at that point, SAC COC staff started reviewing our application. Now, normally, these standards are reviewed by peer reviewers from other community colleges in other states that are similar to our community colleges, but the first part of an initial process is by SAC COC staff. And we had a meeting with them the last week of November, no, the last week of June, and they talked through their recommendations for changes to the initial application. They gave us a seven-page letter, and Dr. Boykin shuddered when she opened it up and saw it was seven pages long. But during the Zoom call, we contemplated asking, but we didn't ask, and at the end of the call, the financial lady that works with SAC COC, I said, I sit in on a lot of these calls. Normally, these letters are twenty-five to thirty pages each, and these calls are about four hours long. Your pages, yours are only seven pages, so you should commend yourself. So I commend the staff, just echoing what Dr. Boykin has said earlier. The staff is incredible at Reed. We're a small, but lean, but mean staff. I'm telling you, doing three accreditations at once, I wouldn't even have thought it was possible. So we are set, and you see, it says Reed State is here. She put that in black when I sent the slide to her. I guess she didn't want you to read that because it looks like we haven't done much by looking at that, but actually, if we hadn't had that permission from the feds, I was looking at it the other night, we would be at step ten now, if we hadn't had to wait six months on that. So what we, what you see from now on is our dates, based on what Sarah told you earlier, pulling off the impossible with an audit that quickly, that's our anticipated dates. Of course, it's still in the hands of SAC COC as to whether that happens or not and whether it's possible or not. But their dates, they gave us during the Zoom call, you can see in the other, in the other column there, wouldn't be giving accreditation until June of twenty-five, but we're hoping with faster audits the next two years that maybe we can do this faster. But I'll go pretty fast on the other steps. Submission of our stuff back to SAC COC, including their changes, we're going to do that within the next week. That's my anticipated deadline for us doing that. As soon as we submit those back, the staff will review it again from SAC COC. If they think we're ready, they're going to ask for authorization of candidacy committee. Dr. Bell Whelan has the authority to do that. Normally, you have to go to the SAC COC Board of Trustees, but if they think we're ready and they don't want us to have to wait, she can give us that authorization. If she gives us that authorization, we're hoping that we will get a candidacy committee we're hoping that we will get a candidacy committee on, on campus this fall. You see, they said spring, but we're hoping for fall. And then the granting of candidacy status, if our plan goes into effect December of this year, we should get candidacy status as an institution with SACC COC. And what that means is at that point, you know, we're a candidate institution for membership with SACC COC. And the courses that our students are taking will then be transferable if they're academic courses. They said June of '24. Authorization of an accreditation committee visit will follow that. As long as we can meet all the, any, any kind of changes that the candidacy committee suggests, as long as we can meet those quickly, they will authorize an accreditation committee visit. Step 10 says the SACC VP then that's assigned to us will come to campus, and she will talk about the second half of the standards of the complete compliance report. However, we're, we're overachievers at Reed, so the first SACC COC VP told me that if we really want to speed this up, if we'll go ahead and address the second half of our standards while we're waiting on their review of our report, then that will greatly speed up the timeline. So we did. We already have a good, very good draft of the second half of the standards ready to put together with our first half and make a complete compliance report. So hopefully, steps 10, 11, and 12 will go very fast once we get there. And then 11, we will have a complete accreditation committee visit, just like a reaffirmation committee coming to any of our colleges, and they will visit us. And then number 12 is SACC COC awards membership to the institution. We were, we are hoping for December of 2024. They told us the, the June of 2025, but they only said that because of our audit. They said our report that we turned in originally was great. So that's, that's where we are, and that's where we hope to be, and we sure hope we get to do the first column. Thanks to you for doing everything possible, and thanks for the System Office for pulling off the impossible and helping us get an audit by November the 15th, when our fiscal year ends September 30th.
Well, thank you, Glenda. Glenda, the work system lied. Jimmy, I think you just used her.
I was going to ask if I could make a comment, Chancellor.
Yeah. Well, why, why would I ever deny you that?
You know, I have the privilege of being president at Calhoun. I went there two years ago, June 1st, and Calhoun soon found out that they were on monitoring with SACC, and I was ready to pull my hair out. I was crying, I was praying, and Chancellor Baker sent me Dr. Glenda Colagross, and she worked with my staff extensively. And if it had not been for her, I, I don't know where we would be. But I can tell you right now that we are, Calhoun Community College is in good standing with SACC COC and is no longer on monitoring. And thank you.
Well, Chancellor Baker had asked me to talk about the rest of the story and what I do and all my other duties as assigned when I'm not working with Reed. So Jimmy stole my thunder. I wasn't going to call him out as one of my children I was going to talk about by name, the ones that had perfect reports. But anyway, it is what it is. What accreditation really is, all about quality. And I know it's a bad word sometimes for our presidents, especially when we're going through the process, because it sometimes can be grueling, because you have to change some things. You have to tweak them, you have to make them better. And sometimes that's hard to get everybody at the college on board with, with making changes. They, it's always, well, we've always done it that way. Well, we're going to change it a little bit now. And now, Dr. Boykin has said that several times over the last couple of months. But anyway, it's all about quality. And the reason for accreditation is without accreditation from either COE or from SACC COC, we could not give federal funds to our students. That means they couldn't get Pell Grants, and they couldn't get any other kind of money from the federal government. And all of you know enough now, as a Board of Trustees, you know how important that is. We wouldn't have the numbers that Neil reported earlier if that were the case. So that's what accreditation really is. 22 of our colleges in our system of the 24 are accredited by SACC COC, and as you heard us talk a minute ago, we hope that's 23 by the end of next year. And Reed and Ingram are accredited by the Council on Occupational Education, which is a great accrediting body and very similar to SACC COC. However, the students cannot transfer if you're on, in a COC school. And we want to offer our students every opportunity that they can get throughout our state. So that's the reason we're seeking SACC COC accreditation at Reed. We created this position, the Chancellor created this position, two years ago this month. And for two years, we've worked to try to work with our colleges and offer this resource from the System Office to the colleges. And when I say offer, Dr. Vicki Olsen and I decided in the beginning, it would be best if, if the colleges were able to ask for it, if they wished to have it. Some colleges have longstanding personnel in their accreditation departments, and so they don't need any assistance. Other colleges need assistance. So I've gone all the way from helping actually go in and design how we're going to present the report. I'm looking at Jimmy because we spent lots of hours with the staff saying, here's how we're going to present it. So most of the time, the colleges are doing what we need to be doing. We just need to present the narrative and the documentation to show that. So I can go in and very help write drafts and do all that and be very intrusive, or I can just be the guide on the side and look at the drafts, which is what I do with, with 90% of the colleges, look at their drafts and make suggestions for feedback, with my feedback, and then they can take them or leave them, and then they send them back to me again and again sometimes. But that's what we're doing. We've also, I've also helped the System Office. I've worked with Mr. Roger Bates when we had to change all the prison campuses from SACC COC institutions to, to be new campuses for Ingram State Technical College. A part of that meant that four colleges had to write substantive changes to close campuses and programs with SACC COC. And then Annette Funderburgh had to write for an opening new campuses with COE. So it was quite a process to go through, but we had all those approved. And then we've also created what we're calling an Accreditation Interest Group throughout our system. We've always worked together on SACC COC related stuff, and you help me and I'll help you kind of thing. But this is more of a group where we, we talk about all the changes, and we talk about all the best practices. And with that, I would like to go through a couple of successes that we've had. We started this in August of 2021, and then at the December meeting of SACC COC Board of Trustees, I had assisted two colleges that were on monitoring with SACC COC because of an outstanding issue. We were able to get both of those colleges off monitoring with no follow-up. At the June 2022 meeting, I was also able to help another college in our system get through, get off monitoring with no follow-up. And I also helped, I wasn't going to call him out, I helped Jimmy, I was just in Calhoun Community College, go from 11 referrals in their onsite visit to down to four, because sometimes when you have referrals on your institutional effectiveness, it takes more than one report to get off that because you have a lot of work to do on campus. So then, in the following December, we were able, no, this next June, one year later, we were able to get Calhoun off monitoring with no follow-up. In the December 2022 meeting, I have to brag on Southern Union, because Southern Union, I spent four and a half years there. So I'm proud of my Southern Union people. They did a fifth-year report, and I guess my four and a half years, they became OCD like me. So they sent their report back to me three times to look at it. So their fifth-year report, which is completely reviewed offsite, was, had no referrals, and I've chaired the fifth-year committee for SACC COC for six years when I was on the Board of Trustees. So that's almost unheard of, because it's a completely offsite report. And they were asked recently to allow SACC to put their report, their fifth-year report, in their resource room for their meetings for the next two, two to three years. And that, to me, is like being in the Hall of Fame for SACC COC to be able to do that. So I'm very proud of, very proud of Southern Union for that, that accomplishment. This past year, of course, we got Calhoun no monitoring and no follow-up, and, and their SACC COC VP is very, very proud of them. He said that to me at the Summer Institute. So Jimmy, hats off to you. Dr. Klein is on your, in your corner now. And at that same meeting, Chattahoochee Valley received reaffirmation with no follow-up report. And that's a very, very good outcome, and I'm very proud of Chattahoochee Valley and all the people that work with me there. I had a lot of instructors working with me on weekends. And then, last of all, we have, we've had several colleges that have done substantive changes and all other kinds of reports. But currently, we're working with six colleges on compliance reports. We're working with one, at least one college on a fifth year, and we're working with a couple of substantive changes in addition to Reed's initial accreditation. But all this is possible because of you guys, and I want to thank you so much for providing this resource. I've been called by colleagues in three different states, North Carolina, Louisiana, and Georgia, wanting to know how can they get a resource like this at their System Office. And you and the Chancellor had that foresight, and I just want to thank you guys. The thanks that these guys give me when we get a good report, that really goes to you, because you're making a difference with our students around the state because of this, and thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. That's an interesting and good report. There's a lot of activity goes on with SACC that normally you don't have to see, and I don't understand sometimes. And I have to have someone that I can turn to and say, what about this? And I think what I'm going to do, where's Susan? Why don't you get our friend from Atlanta, Bell Whelan, who's in charge of all of this, and let's find a time when she can come and address this board, because this board probably is doing more for supporting SACC than most boards do across the country.
We are hopeful that she will be there for you a little bit.
Oh, you, you got the jump on me. But I'm proud we talked to her. But no, no, she, you know, it's, it's kind of one of those things, people kind of make it difficult. But most of the time, conversation and working with each other, we can solve a lot of problems. And so, yeah, I'm proud you've already that far along. And I appreciate the job that is happening, what's happening at Reed, is happening, it has happened all across the system. And Glenda has done a superb job. I'd ask Sarah to come back and talk about, you know, we've gone through another rating, which is important, Moody's, in terms of the investment of people into our system or the purchase of funds. So if you will, Sarah.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good morning, Board members. We recently went through our annual credit rating report with Moody's, and I'm happy to announce that we have an A1 stable rating, which is a very good rating for higher education in today's market. We're always trying to move that needle to double and AAA, but that takes a, a great deal of long-term improvements, which I'll go over with you today. But on a personal note, I want to say that along with this credit rating experience this year, I've been involved in this for the past nine years with Moody's. And in the past, it feels like we've been petitioning to, to retain that A1 rating. And we've moved into an environment where we're, we're able to easily highlight what the system is doing as a whole. And part of those highlights include the strength and the support of our Board of Trustees, the, sorry, I can't read my own writing, the, the strength and dedication of our colleges, the positive economic impact of the study that we recently did played a significant role in the conversation with Moody's this year, the significant and growing Innovation Center contributions, and then, of course, the audit and financial timely reporting. That is a very big highlight for, for Moody's. It's something that they focus on heavily. So everything we've been doing for the past five, five to six years has led to a point of great stabilization for our Moody's conversations. And we just appreciate Stiefel and all the support that they give us with these, with these credit ratings. But in your packet, you have both the System Office, the system-wide credit rating, A1 stable, and also Enterprise went through it in conjunction with us because they were going through a bond sale, and they also received an A1 rating. We're, we're very happy with the progress we're making and the continued improvements that we're hearing back from Moody's. We have credit strengths, including the, that we're the dominant provider in, in the state of two-year degrees, our positive enrollment numbers, the oversight and significant funding from the state of Alabama, and then also the management that the Board and the Chancellor has to leverage resources to offset any shortfalls that any college may, may have. The, Moody's is very confident in that ability of the Board to transition funds should it ever be needed. And I'm happy to tell you that, that it has never been needed, but it is very important to Moody's that we have that flexibility within our funding sources. A couple of the credit rating challenges that we continue to experience are, our state pension plan is incredibly high. That's just something that all states are having to deal with. Unfortunately, we don't see those numbers decreasing with the longevity, with the lifespan increasing and the careers increasing. Our pension rates and our OPEB's are not tending to decrease there, so that's something that we're, that we keep a close eye on, but it's difficult to see that reducing in the years forward. And then also, of course, always a credit challenge is the volatility of enrollment. But with, with our continued improvement in enrollment numbers and the solid impact that our marketing and our student services and recruiting efforts are, are having with this enrollment need, we're seeing a great positive move, as Neil mentioned before. All of that leads to positive revenue improvements and reduction in overall debt service to liquidity. And so we're really happy about all of those moves there. We'll continue to strive forward, try and keep Moody's just as happy as we possibly can. We touted, of course, the current audits, which we've never been able to show them before, in our early-term reviews that we've had our audits completed. They're very appreciative of that move forward there, and we're one of their few agencies that they review that are still on a 930 timeline. So they're very used to having current financial statements audited because most of their reviews close on June 30th. So we're always in the, on the back end of that timeline because of our year-end close is 930, but they've been impressed with the progress that we've made. We've promised it for a few years now, and we're, we're showing that, that transition into positive financial timelines and timely audits. So we will continue to move forward, make all improvements that we possibly can, and try and move that needle to double-A rating. Any questions? Anything else you'd like me to cover? Thank you very much.
I, I will tell you, as you read through our, when you look through the report from Moody's, the move that the system made to utilization of private audit firms, which puts us in a position to become more timely in the terms of the audits and more meaningful, was a big issue for Moody's in the past. They are really excited about our moving forward so that we can determine within a reasonable amount of time when the audits are going to be completed. And that makes, that makes our opportunity for improving our credit rating down the road. Of course, we've already improved it, but, and it's not bad at all. It's certainly an investment-grade rating, but I just think it's something that put up, it, it just puts me in a better position of knowing that every school is compliant.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Well, we've had some very good news, both with the credit rating, the work that's going on down with Dr. Boykin and her team of all-stars down at Reed. I was just thinking to myself, not having gone through a SAC COC, one would probably be enough, but it seems to take three accreditations at once and then put them on a rocket ship timeline. The degrees of difficulty go through the roof, and it seems to be managed quite well. But I think that is part and parcel to show, you know, the work obviously of Reed, but also the commitment that we have from the men and women who mostly are here in front of us in terms of our presence. And so, we thank you for all of that good work, all of you collectively. Are there any committee reports? If not, the next meeting of this Board of Trustees will actually be at Bishop State Community College down in Mobile on September 13th. If there's not anything else, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. And we will follow up with the work session after this meeting. And that, let's make it 11:30. That'll give you about seven minutes to, to stretch your legs and come back in for the work session. Do I have a motion for adjournment? A motion to adjourn by Mr., excuse me, my desk. All those in favor, raise your hand. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right. We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready. I'm good. I have no issues. I'm glad you're welcome. I say the reason.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot to me. You know, I guess. I'm ready.
We don't do that. I've got it all syndicated, so if you need some experience, give me a call and shoot
If you would kindly take your seats, we will begin the work session. We will actually begin the work session for the Alabama Community College System, and we're ready to start.
Good morning to you all. The first item on the work session is Enterprise State's request to approve the current mission statement of the college. Are there any questions? The next item is Shelton State's request that the Board of Trustees approve the college's current mission statement. Are there any questions? The next item is Marion Military Institute's request that the Board of Trustees approve the mission statement of the college. Are there any questions? The next item is Bishop State's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the president of the college to name the Machine Tool Technology Lab in the Gene Hauss Center for Advanced Manufacturing and Technology as the AM NS Calvert Machine Tool Technology Lab, and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity is in exchange for a gift of $50,000. Are any questions? The next item is Sneed State's request that the Board of Trustees approve the college's application for an associate in applied science degree and certificate in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and refrigeration technology to be implemented in the fall semester 2024. You'll note that the college anticipates more than sufficient funds to support the program, and the college has included the new program checklist, and has dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's, and included supporting letters from the community. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item is Sneed State's request that the Board of Trustees approve the college's application for an associate in applied science degree and certificate in machine tool technology to be implemented in the fall semester 2024. Again, the college has noted that there will be more than sufficient funds to put this program into operation, and has included the checklist, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and has included letters of support from the community. Are there any questions related to this item? The next item is Wallace State Selma's request that the Board of Trustees approve the college's application for an associate in applied science degree and certificate in advanced manufacturing, modern manufacturing, to be implemented in the fall semester 2023. The college has indicated that there are more than sufficient funds to support this program, and they have included the new program checklist and supporting letters from the community. Any questions relating to this item? The next item is Gaston State's request that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution providing for the construction, renovation, and equipping of facilities on Gaston State's campuses for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the maximum amount of $20 million for securing payment of the principal and interest of such bonds, and for the payment of the cost of issuing the bonds. Are there any questions related to this item? The next items relate to operating budgets, and I'll turn the floor over to Sarah.
Good morning again. So, in your packets are both the college FY '24 compilation, operating budgets, and then also the system office operating budgets. I'll talk to you about them separately. The college operating budgets for the FY '24 period are looking very healthy this year. We're very appreciative of all the colleges being diligent in their responsible budgeting. They're showing approximately a $50 million surplus in revenues, which is a wonderful addition to, I know, the college's fund balances. We have multiple capital projects moving forward in the next couple of years, so those funds will be well-spent. These numbers are still tentative. We are still going through the completion reviews of all of the budgets, but we do not expect any nominal change to any of these numbers. We're confident in the materiality of these numbers here. And then, the next action item is the ACCS System Office Budget. Sorry, I'm missing my first page on this. So, this budget is not only what the system office utilizes for standard operating procedures, but also a great deal of grants out to the schools. So, that's why you see a budget here of over $141 million. This includes everything from our distance learning programs, workforce programs, adult ed, Perkins, LPN light item programs, and then federal dollars as well that are utilized both at the system office and with our college, grants to our colleges. The system office will run a balanced budget as well in FY '24. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm here to introduce three different action items to you this morning. The first action item that I'd like to present to you is the one for the allocation of $300,000 for the Industry Certification Initiative funding to support the existing industry training program, or EITP, we call it for short. The existing industry training program grant is designed to serve the training needs of existing businesses in industry by assisting the employer with certain expenses associated with skills upgrade training of their full-time, permanent employees. The training can include, but is not limited to, company-specific work, skills, safety, technical computer skills, new manufacturing technologies, equipment operation training, or changes in their production processes. It can also include soft skills training such as leadership, teamwork, communication, and management skills. There's a dollar-for-dollar company soft match required for this grant, but it can be in the form of trainee wages and benefits, equipment purchase for the training, training materials and supplies, training curriculum, travel, meals, and lodging costs. The EITP grant application can be submitted by the Alabama employers through the community colleges that are supporting that on an as-needed basis. We're recommending the Board of Trustees authorize the chancellor to distribute through grants the sum of $300,000 from Industry Certification Initiative funds. Individual grants awarded by the chancellor shall be limited to a maximum of $15,000 for the purpose of providing training for existing businesses. Would you like to take any questions on that particular action item? So, the second action item is for the allocation of $100,000 of ICI funding for the Skills USA Scholarship Program. The ACCS Skills USA Scholarship Program is designed to support students enrolled in technical skilled and service occupation programs, including health programs through Skills USA, which is a professional leadership organization. The Skills USA aims to enhance the quality of the nation's future skilled workforce by developing personal workplace and technical skills with the foundation in academics. The organization conducts various local, state, and national competitions where students can demonstrate their excellence in over 100 occupational and leadership skill areas. The ACCS Scholarship has been offered since 2011, provides $2,000 to gold medal winners in career tech competitions covering tuition, books, and fees at our community colleges. The scholarship encourages students to consider enrolling in a community college related to their skill discipline and supports current college students in completing their programs that they're currently enrolled in. So, we're recommending that the Board of Trustees authorize an allocation of $100,000 from ICI funds to the scholarship winners for the 2024 Skills USA competitions. Any questions on that? In addition, the last action item is for an allocation of $6,774,546 of ICI funding to support grant requests for the Success Coach Initiative and for the Workforce Development Competitive Fund Grant Proposals. So, the Success Coach Program aims to increase underserved students' access to post-secondary education by providing college and career planning services focused on those receiving free or reduced lunch and likely to be first-generation college students. The program's objectives include early outreach, informing students about career opportunities and education requirements, empowering them to make informed decisions, and offering personalized support. The activities involve communication with targeted high schools, academic preparation, post-secondary education planning, financial assistance, and career exploration. Our performance measures include guiding at-risk students into career pathways, increasing enrollment in career technical education programs, and placing students in post-secondary education after high school graduation. We do have monthly reports that are utilized to track progress and services of each program that are reported back to us monthly. In addition, the Workforce Development Competitive Funds support innovative customized projects that address businesses' short-term and long-term workforce needs, enhancing regional talent pipelines, and offering work-based learning opportunities. The focus is on emerging industries and growing job demands. The grant proposal process involves the Regional Workforce Council issuing regionally specific requests for proposals. The colleges then submit grant applications via the ACCS Work Grant Application website. The Regional Workforce Council then invites applicants to present before a committee that includes and is required sector experts on their committees. We were requiring two sector experts per committee, and then them to submit those experts' names. And then, the Regional Workforce Council then shares the scores and feedback with ACCS. And then, we have a cross-functional committee here at the system office that reviews and makes the final allocation recommendations. So, the list that is included on the action item represents the approved grant proposals excluding special populations awards, which are under the chancellor's approval and not part of the ICI allocation. But the full list of grant awards from all the workforce funding sources is provided for your reference, but only the ICI-funded projects are included in the action item. So, I'd be glad to take any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Good morning, board members. We have five projects for you to consider as recommendations today. The first one starts with Central Alabama, the community college there in Alexander City. And this project, board members, is for renovating a space for marine technology, as well as the construction science programs at that campus. On the top side of this slide and in your packet, where you've identified the location for the renovation to occur for these two programs. The intent is to be able to go through the space, modernize it, and work within the budget that has been established for the project itself. We expect that we can, we will receive bids later this month and have those available for the board to take action on at the September board meeting. And the scope of the work will carry us through the third quarter of next year. Part of the motivation behind this is a legislative program or legislative allocation of funds that came to us last year to help with this effort and the need in that part of the community and the state for marine technology and so forth. Board members, any questions about the project at Alexander City? The next one goes to Reed State, and this is for the renovation of the 200 building located there at Evergreen. We've highlighted in there the building so you can see its proximity to the rest of the campus. This particular building is an entire renovation of a facility that is more than 40 years old. We'll go through, we'll gut it, and then modernize the space with its focus and its intent to address the issue and the needs for improving the healthcare sciences in that, at the college. You can see the schematic here of the floor plan that we have and the improvements that will be made to the building and the interior. And then, we've included in there as well, in your packet, some information about the elevations and some of the changes that we're making. And we have a very deliberate and intentional architectural theme that's going to be carried throughout the campus in all the buildings that will be renovated over the next few years. We do have some preliminary bids that will be coming in at the end of August for the board to start taking action on. And then, the work will commence with going into the fourth quarter, and we expect that that work will take us about 12 months. Board members, any questions about the modernization of Building 200 at Reed State? The next one, board members, is at Summerton. And this goes to the, at Bevel State, to the Summerton campus, specifically to Building 400. And this space is being renovated to accommodate the program, or the machine tooling program that is relocating to this part of the system. We've included in there schematics that show the floor plan and how the machine tooling will lay out and so forth for that project, and then includes some of the changes that will be made to the exterior of the facilities. We expect that bids will be available back to us on September the 5th, and then work will commence as we go into the third quarter. And then, it's about a 12-month process towards to complete that. Any questions about Summerton and the machine tooling program in Building 400? The next project that we have goes to Calhoun. This is an addition and expansion to the Advanced Technology Center that we have on the campus there at Tanner. This is the, an aerial shot of the Tanner campus there at just north of Decatur. We have at this location, board members, welding an aerospace and the machine tooling program that occupy two airport or airplane hangars that have been utilized since about 1940. And so, they've tried to keep up with those spaces and modernize them, but they are getting old. And so, for the last couple of years, the college has been planning to put an addition on to, where you see the arrows there going to that Advanced Technology Center, and the addition going to the north. This is the existing Advanced Technology Center that is there at the campus. We have this floor plan or the schematic layout of the addition to that building, and the addition primarily moves to the north, and it will spread and expand into the existing parking lot that you see there, if you're familiar with the campus. And thus, it will also include the addition of additional parking space and a new parking lot to the north. We do have here a little bit of a schematic or rendering to show what the front of that addition will look like as it flanks and goes to the north of the existing building, and then a little bit of a zoom in to what the front profile of that addition will look like as it complements the architecture of the existing building. This is another zoom out so you can see how that ties and transitions into the existing facility. This here represents a schematic floor plan of the addition. It is a partial two-story addition with instructional space, and then the larger lab space and the elevated ceiling heights for the programs that will go into these locations. The addition itself is approximately 56,000 new square feet to accommodate what we currently have in the existing two hangars there at the campus. Bids come in on the 7th, and we expect that with those favorable bid results that we'll bring that to the board at the September board meeting for action. Construction time for this one will clearly clear carry us through into 2025. This one's a little bit lengthy, or more lengthy, in terms of its timeline, but we're optimistic that we'll have that available so that the college can use those resources going into the fall semester. Any questions about the Advanced Technology addition for workforce programs? The last one, board members, this was coming to you from our meetings last week as an action item, but this has been held up a little bit for delays in the bid. But this is some improvements to needed HVAC facilities and programs on several buildings at Wallace-Hansville, specifically the Computer Science, the Business Education Building, and the Student Center. The improvements here are specific and targeted to modernizing the HVAC and the controls in these buildings. They historically have had issues with them, and this is an opportunity, because of the age of the equipment and so forth, to modernize, get humidity control into these spaces so that they're suitable for academic instruction. We do expect that those, we intended those bids to come in on August 1st. Those bids are now routed to later this week for us, hopefully, to receive them. Board members, any questions about Wallace-Hansville and the HVAC project?
I have a question about Hansville.
Yes.
Are you continuing to see increased activity by contractors on bids?
We're seeing, we're seeing a mixed bag. The projects that you approved earlier today, if you take, for example, we see the results of what we received up there at Shelton. Those were extremely responsive and wonderful bids. We saw the same thing at Jefferson State with President Brown's project up there. We saw, in fact, that was the most competitive bid return that we have had in the last two years. We had over nine GCs that participated, six of them turned in bids. And when you take a look at the official bid tabulation, we had all kinds of notations on every one of those envelopes where the contractors were negotiating up until about one or two minutes before bids were needed to be turned in, and every one of them wrote down D-DOCS. And so, it really emphasizes the importance of competition. And when we see that, we get good numbers. And so, we were absolutely encouraged by it. But we have also seen evidence, and you take a look at the Clem Gym project, that was not a competitive or did not generate the competition that we wanted to see. So, our focus remains on driving competition. And visiting with design professionals, they are beginning to understand how important this is to us. And others that are assisting us, where we've inserted a few construction management as advisors, even in visiting with one of those recently, they are out there shaking the bushes. And you see the effort in the outreach to hundreds, if not thousands, of contractors to invite them to come and bid. And some of those that we're still working with are slow to understand, but we keep repeating the narrative and saying, "This is where we go." And when we bring others in to assist us with projects, we need them to drive competition, put this out there early, and not just 30 days before, in an advertisement saying, "Here's a project." We need everybody and all efforts on deck, if you will, pushing the narrative and putting this out there three, four, five, six months in advance. Because contractors are planning. They're looking at one, two years, some of them, at least a six-month minimum. And if they know something's coming down, and it's attractive to them, and it's in a location that they want to participate in and know of it, and not just weeks before, they will plan and organize their resources there. We saw that at Drake. And the swing in terms of the cost of our workforce centers, that was nearly $5 million, just because some of those guys knew that this was coming. I hope that answers the question. Any other questions, board members? Thank you for all you do.
Unless we have any more questions or comments, this work session is adjourned.